To the invocation by Mr. English and the pledge by Mr. Boswell.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we shall thank you this lovely day that you've brought us. Lord, we also ask that you just look over our men and women in our military and also in law enforcement, to watch over us each and every day. Lord, we just ask today that you just give us guidance and directions as we make decisions for this community and for the citizens of Stafford County. I pray all these things in your precious and glorious name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. English and Mr. Boswell. Ms. Bailey, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. Appicella?
Here.
Ms. Vanooch?
Here.
Mr. English?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Here.
Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Myself, sir. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Are there any declarations of disqualification by anyone? Seeing none, we do have a request and I would like to accept a motion to alter the agenda and put item number two at the start.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Vanooch.
I second it.
And Mr. English seconded. So we have a motion to change the order of the agenda, which is really just addressing the two public hearings. And so if you'll take a moment to vote. All right. And that passes unanimously. Now we move to the public presentation part of our meeting. At this point, any individual that wishes to talk about any topic other than the two public hearing items, which are items one and two on the agenda, are encouraged to come down and right up to the microphone. We ask that you state your name and your address. As soon as you state your name and your address, the clock starts ticking. The green light will show. At the green light, you have two minutes or three minutes. And then when you hit one minute, the yellow light will go on. And when you hit the time to stop, the red light will go on. And we ask that you wrap up your comments. So at this time, if anyone would like to speak on any item in general, or that is not a public hearing, come on down. And you can form a line if you wish. Good evening.
My name's Ken DeJavitt. My address is 4001 Salgrave Drive, Alexandria, Virginia. And I'm one of the board members of the AMA. And I'm here to speak about the proposed amendment to the cemetery ordinance, which will be discussed later. Mr. Chairman, respected leaders, we are longtime members of the Stafford community. We have owned and operated a cemetery since 1996 on Brook Road and seek to develop another cemetery in the county. We needed more land in an additional location because we sold some of the land on Brook Road to the county because of the proximity to the crow's nest. We would like to work with the planning commission during the subcommittee review of the proposed changes to the cemetery ordinance. We would like to share our special expertise on burial issues. We ask that the commission appoint three disinterested commissioners to serve on the subcommittee and also that we be provided with advance notice of the committee meetings to permit one of our members to attend every subcommittee meeting. Finally, we have checked with the neighboring jurisdictions, including Spotsylvania, Fredericksburg, Prince William, and King George. To our knowledge, no other local government imposes a 900-feet buffer between a cemetery and a perennial stream. In most cases, the greatest buffer distance is 50 to 100 feet, based on the Health Department regulations and the Chesapeake Bay regulations. Thank you very much for all the time you've spent protecting the quality of life in Stafford. And thank you for facilitating our participation in the planning process. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Can I give this as a record for this?
Yes. And actually, Ms. Danette, it's wonderful. She takes everything word for word, but this will make her life a lot easier. So thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? Come on up to the microphone. Okay. Seeing, does anyone else wish to speak during the public comment time? Otherwise, we'll wrap it up and move on with the agenda. Yes, sir?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is David Silver. I live at 2 Skywood Court in the Rock Hill District. My house and all the houses on Skywood Court have a private wells and drinking water. And is why I'm concerned about the cemetery being located at 1508 Garrisonville Road, which is directly across the highway from me and within 900-foot buffer, which was established in ordinance 016-39 during the early 2015. Was rumor circulating that an organization wanted to purchase the property at 1508 Garrisonville Road and develop a cemetery. This alarmed me and my neighbors, since the property in question slopes downhill from the Quantico Marine Corps Base towards Garrisonville Road and Skywood Court. This concern consequently goes towards our wells. Runoff from this property also flows into a quiet creek, which feeds the Smith Lake Reservoir, a source of drinking water for thousands in the Stafford County homeowners. The AMA purchased the parcel 19-3E on June 3, 2015, which was prior to the ordinance 013-39 being adopted. But even the state and county law, as it existed at the date, required them to notify and get consent from the property owners who were separated by the state road within 250 feet. I am one such property owner and was never contacted nor asked for consent by the AMA. This is a violation of both state and county law. And at the time, if they had the intent to put a cemetery on the property, we heard nothing further on this matter. But the rumor persisted in on June 9, 2016. I sent an email to the supervisor, Mauer, requesting that the Board of Supervisors consider this and inform us on how they intended to protect our water supply if a cemetery was allowed on the Garrisonville Road property. This kick-started the review process, which resulted in ordinance 016-39 being enacted. This process lasted several months and included at least five public hearings, in which the property could express their, the public could express their opinion on the proposed ordinance. I spoke in favor of this at the November 9 Planning Commission meeting and the AMA.
Just if you'll wrap up, please.
Yeah. Deliberation, we had the deliberation at the Board of Supervisors, 2016, and they chose not to show. In fact, the public, the first public mention of this was established at the cemetery on the site in the statement made by Mr. Khan, President of the AMA, on September 19, 2017, Board of Supervisors meeting.
Okay, Ms. Silver.
And then the Freedom Star.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Glenn Patterson, and I reside at 8 Skywood Court in the Rock Hill District, and I am the next-door neighbor of Dave Silver, who just spoke. I can confirm David's statement that we were concerned when we heard the rumor that a cemetery might be installed across Garrisonville Road from us, since, as David stated, we all on Skywood Court draw our drinking water from private wells, which have been established for quite some time. When we initially heard the rumor, we contacted the county, with Dave being the point person, since his property was the closest. We requested that the county review the regulations regarding establishment of cemeteries and requested assurance that our wells and drinking water would not be adversely impacted. What we heard back from the county was that they had considered the regulation in effect at the time and had found that it was not in compliance with state law, and drafted ordinance 01639 as a result. The Board of Supervisors Commission, Board of Supervisors at its September 20, 2016 meeting, adopted Resolution R16295, which directed your commission to review the proposed ordinance, make recommendations, and hold public hearings. Over the next three months, the Planning Commission created a cemetery ordinance subcommittee, held a public hearing at which Ms. Silver testified, and sent the ordinance back to the supervisors recommending approval. On December 13, 2016, the Board of Supervisors approved ordinance 01639, and it became law. The reason I provided this history lesson, which you're all aware of, is to point out that this was a lengthy process spread over months, and that the AMA had ample opportunity to provide input, which they did not. In fact, the first time that a cemetery on the Garrisonville Road property was ever mentioned, other than the unsubstantiated rumors that we had heard in early 2015, was during Mr. Khan's testimony at the September 19, 2017 Board of Supervisors meeting. Given that the AMA already operates a cemetery in the county, I would assume that they are aware of the process which needs to be followed, as well as the requirements under both state and county law for obtaining consent from the impacted residents. None of this was ever done. A suspicious person might think they were trying to fly under the radar to present their cemetery as a fait accompli. On September 19, 2017, Kristin Davis published a one-sided article in the Freelance Star, apparently at the behest of the AMA. Ms. Davis clearly did not do her homework prior to publishing, because it was replete with inaccuracies and erroneous assumptions. In her article, she quoted Mr. Khan as believing the new ordinance was motivated by enmity toward Muslims. She quoted Mr. Rafi Ahmed, a director, saying, "We want to make sure we are treated equally." In my view, they're looking to be treated differently and have special exceptions made because of what religion they practice. For my part, I wouldn't care if the VA wanted to put a cemetery across the street, which, by the way, I would be eligible for interment in, because I would be just as opposed to it for the same reasons I opposed their as-yet unannounced cemetery. It would have a serious negative impact on my drinking water and my quality of life. I strongly urge you to send ordinance 01639 back to the Board of Supervisors unchanged. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yeah, my name is Patrick Minor. I also reside at 8 Skywood Court in the Rock Hill District. I just basically want to let you know that I drink out of that water, and I am deeply concerned about what could happen to that water if there is a cemetery there. So I would hope you all, you know, really look at this very deeply, because it concerns a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one moving, I will close the public comment portion of our meeting, which brings us to our public hearings. The first one is technically on your agenda as number two. Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, this public hearing would be to amend Table 7.1 of the county's zoning ordinance, specifically dealing with parking for manufacturing uses. The planning commission had authorized a public hearing to change the standard from 2.25 spaces per 1,000 square feet of building area to one parking space per 1,000 square feet of building area. The ordinance was initially referred to the planning commission to consider an amendment of the parking standard based on number of employees of the maximum size of a shift for manufacturing. At the time the ordinance was discussed, the commission had asked staff to look at various different nearby jurisdictions and how they treat the parking requirements. It varies by jurisdiction. Some base the standard on a square footage requirement. Some allow the standard to be based on maximum work shift size, and some allow to do a combination of one or the other, depending upon which has a smaller amount of parking spaces required. So tonight's public hearing would be a public hearing to consider the ordinance based on one space per 1,000 square feet.
Okay. And Mr. Harvey, if I understand correctly, there's been further discussion about changing it to shift, so that even if we go forward with a public hearing this evening, we would be revisiting this next month with a different language about per shift?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. If the commission so desires to authorize a hearing for another amendment based on shift size. When this item was first referred to the planning commission, there was discussion with the Board of Supervisors about an economic development prospect that was looking to expand their existing business in the county and desired to have the ordinance changed for parking based on the shift size. The Board, when it sent the ordinance for the planning commission's consideration, it allows the commission to make changes it deems necessary to the draft ordinance. What was advertised for public hearing was based on a one space per 1,000 square foot, based on the authorization from the planning commission. If the commission wants to revisit that and authorize another public hearing, you certainly can do so.
All right. And if I understand correctly, we can't just go through the public hearing process this evening on this item and then make the change to shift. It would have to be two, since it substantially changes the language of said ordinance, it'd have to have a separate public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The public hearing has to be re-advertised to go with the different methodology for determining the number of parking spaces.
So I'm just, we'll throw this out to the members of the commission. Do you have a preference? One option is to go through the public hearing tonight with the language that is not per shift, and then we are back here again with the same topic, per shift, in December, or we just cancel the public hearing tonight and do it once?
I'm actually in favor of canceling the public hearing, doing it once, and that actually will align with our readout of the Parking and Drive Isle Subcommittee, and we'll have warehousing, parking feedback as well. So I think it kind of fits nicely together.
Okay. Any other input?
No, I'll make a second motion with Ms. Vanooch, because I think she's correct. No sense in dragging this on.
And Mr. Harvey, you don't, we don't theoretically need a motion. We just need, or do you want it as a motion? It could be either way, either my discretion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, as the chairman, you can cancel the public hearing. However, staff would recommend you provide, the commission provides a motion on what to advertise for the December meeting.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Appicella?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not clear on what the issue is or what the prospect is. I don't know if it's a small manufacturing entity or a large one, but I'm wondering if, when staff comes back with an alternative approach, if the size of the business is one of the issues, if there's a way of still keeping it by square footage, but addressing it based on a small size versus a large-size manufacturing entity, if that's what the issue is. I'm still not clear. I mean, my concern is, we base this on, I think, a standard from an international body that indicated 1,000-square-foot building space, parking space for every 1,000 square feet. So now we're going to deviate from that, and I think that's also a standard applied in other local jurisdictions. So I'd want to, I'd want to see if there are other options, because again, this is gonna, this is not just going to impact this one entity. It's going to impact the entire county. So I just want to be sure we're doing this smartly and not providing a carve-out for one entity that's going to impact a bunch of other entities going forward, if there's a way to address it in an alternative way.
Mr. Harvey, what's your take on that? May I ask?
Well, Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Appicella indicated, Institute for Transportation Engineers' manual does have three studies that they did for parking for manufacturing. That was all based on a per-square-footage size rather than a shift size that I recall. That was part of the discussion prior to the public hearing being authorized. If the commission wants to go with a different standard, we certainly can proceed in that regard. The issue we have tonight is that we have to consider authorizing a public hearing if we're going with a different methodology. We'd have to know what that methodology would be at this point in time to clearly understand what's being requested for public hearing.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Rhodes?
If I might ask one question for counsel and then another general consideration. But for counsel, because I always get this wrong, as you said, it's a, it was too distinctive of a change to go from the square footage to the other. So that means if the, if the, I'm going to go with both variations. So if we go forward with the per-square-foot methodology, and the board did not, did not believe, and ultimately, when they're looking at the larger issues, that that was the best way to go forward, I'm hearing that they couldn't modify then at that point, and they'd have to restart the process over. Conversely, I'd just like to confirm, if we went forward with a per-shift methodology, and ultimately, considering the broader considerations that the board does, they decide that wasn't the right approach, does that mean they'd have to then come back down to re-initiate for the square footage? They don't have the flexibility at that level to modify from one to the other? Is that just to confirm, Ms. McLendon?
Mr. Rhodes, I think it may be actually dependent on the number itself. Currently, we have a square footage methodology, and so we're talking about completely changing the methodology. So if we went back to the board and they did not want the per-shift methodology but the square footage, it could be dependent on which number they're going for. And I'd have to think about it a little more to see if they're increasing or decreasing the square footage. But I think they could return to that methodology only because it's what we currently have in place. But the number of it would be important.
Thank you. I would just share, consistent with Mr. Appicella's comments, that if you have a location, regardless where it is, a certain development that's coming in, or any other space that this would apply to, if you have somewhere that's a heavily automated operation and they only need a few people, they only, may only have six people per shift and have 60,000 square feet or 40,000, I'm being a little ridiculous, but. And then if in three, five, 10 years, that goes away, and the reuse opportunity there is somewhat more manually intensive, and you've only developed the space in the site for a small number of parking spaces, it constrains the ability to future uses. So I would think at a minimum, if we did anything based on a shift, there's some basic minimum that actually draws on a square footage. I do believe that we should have some bases in our fact in something that is a, a standard that is applied more broadly at other locations. I think that is a good starting place. But if we, I would just submit, if we are going to deviate from that, we ought to have some floor that is there to keep the flexibility of the properties in place. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. Anyone else? So what, basically, the options are, we go through the public hearing. This evening, we could vote on the square footage, and then next month, get the, get the per shift and vote on that. And that presents the Board of Supervisors both options, which we could do. Or we could just cancel the, the square footage and go to per shift size next month and go forward with that one option. Mr. Harvey, is it, when you're looking at shift sizes, is it possible to what Mr. Rhodes was saying, whereas you, you have some sort of flooring?
Well, Mr. Chairman, there are a couple of codes in the nearby area that gives an option. Either you go with a square footage requirement or a shift size, whichever requires the least number of parking spaces. So that could be an option to consider as well. That's a current situation in Spotsylvania County.
Well, so far, I hear one person indicating next to public hearing tonight, I heard, and then I heard other people give opinions, but nobody's saying whether which way they go.
Can you just?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Steve. I'm sorry.
I'm, we have one more meeting after this, right?
Yes, sir.
I mean, one more regular meeting.
Yes, sir.
That's in December. When is that?
13th.
So we don't even know what the language is going to look like between now and then, right?
Mr. Harvey?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the commission would have to make a decision tonight on what you want advertised.
Yep. It's just, if I, the timeline is December, is January 5. So theoretically, we need to do something by the 13th.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I just get a hands of how many people are here for that public hearing? How many people are here for that public hearing?
Just, yeah, just those individuals.
My opinion is, I'd probably like to go ahead.
Go ahead, all right.
Hear from them, and then, you know, we can defer whatever needs to be acted at, because I'd like to see what their, you know, their take is on it. Because they're here for a reason. They wouldn't be here if not. So that's my take on it.
All right. All right. So I guess we'll go.
I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels about it. I mean.
We'll get another process question. So let's say we have the public hearing, and we hear from folks in the audience. Can we, can we still ultimately decide not to proceed forward with something and potentially get an alternative? Or are we kind of stuck with whatever's in front of us, because that's what's?
I think, to me, you can, you can, we could defer, we could hear, get to a point, defer action to next month, a final decision on it, while we also do a public hearing on the other, and determine if we want to send one, both, neither forward to the board.
Okay. All right. So we'll go forward with the public hearing tonight, and then decide which way we want to go after we've heard it. So, Ms. Harvey? And then, then after she presents, then you get to come up and present. Okay. Mr. Harvey?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I did provide a summary previously of the public hearing. Just to recap, this is proposed ordinance 017-39. It would change the parking requirement standards to one space per 1,000 square feet for manufacturing uses in the zoning ordinance.
I'm sorry.
So that was my conclusion of my comments.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Harvey? All right. And gentlemen, since you're the interested parties, and we did this once before, where we had the interested parties have the opportunity to speak, just give us your name and address, and we move forward from there.
The name is Steve, Stephen Gorney, G-O-R-N-E-Y. My address is 206 Sunbury Drive in St. Charles, Illinois. I'm here representing Mapay Corporation, which is currently located on Elm Street, or Elm Street, 300 Elm. We are looking to expand our facility. Currently, we have a 60,000-square-foot manufacturing warehouse facility there. We've purchased some property next door to it, and we're looking to expand another 100,000-square-feet of warehousing and distribution space. Currently, with the way the parking regulations are written now, with roughly 66 employees, we're required to have 94 parking spaces. And so we operate 24 hours a day. So at any given time, we probably have, at the most, 25 employees on site, but we were required to provide 94 parking spaces. With the addition of the warehouse space, I know that's not part of this hearing, but that's going to kick that up to 194. And we're going to add 30 employees. So we'll have 100 employees based around a 24-hour work period. So essentially, we're taking up a lot of space with paid property that's really not providing any benefit. And it's limiting the, the actual space that we have to, for warehousing. Mapay's an 80-year-old company. We're probably the fourth biggest supplier of construction adhesives and grouts. Stafford County is a key manufacturing and distribution center for Mid-Atlantic region. We provide a lot for Lowe's, kind of some of the Home Depot-type stores. We're looking to continue that investment in Stafford County. Right now, we have warehousing space in Spotsylvania. We're looking to bring that over, along with the employees, adding additional employees. So again, we're really looking for some help on some of the parking, because right now, it's, it's tough for my management looking at, okay, we have, we're going to have roughly 100 employees, and yet we need to provide 194 parking spaces. And just from an economic standpoint, it's making tough to kind of justify that, that kind of development and investment in Stafford County. Again, it's been a good location. We've been here over 20 years. We have no intention of selling the building anytime soon. So again, kind of going back to that comment about redevelopment, we're looking to stay here for the long haul. So we're not looking to short-change somebody else for future development. We're looking to stay here for another 20 years with the same building as we expand our facility here. So, that's it. Sorry, I'm not used to doing this, so.
All right, that's fine. No, totally understand. All right. Thank you, Ms. Gorney.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak during the public hearing? Yes, sir? Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chairman. My name is Rick Furnival. I'm a partner with Sullivan Donahoe Ingalls, and we are an engineering and survey firm in Fredericksburg that is working for the Mapay Corporation, and they've been our client since they came to town. And we've worked with them on a number of aspects of their project. As part of this presentation, I have prepared a parking analysis summary similar to what Mr. Harvey alluded to with the surrounding jurisdictions. And I've got Stafford County, City of Fredericksburg, Spotsylvania County, and Prince William County, and the proposal for, that Mapay had spoken to, and I'd like to leave this with you all, you know, for your information. I know tonight's discussion has centered around the industrial use and the square footage requirement. And I think that the points raised are, are good points by the, the members that are. the members that are here tonight. And we would, I believe, support the reduction that would align the Stafford County requirements with the other surrounding localities for one space per 1,000, whereas now you're two and a half. The, that number slightly affects the site, and you'll see here in the information I'm going to give you. And so, if you wanted to go forward and advertise that adjustment to the industrial zone and drop it to one, that would be, we would support that. The real effect is the warehouse and indoor storage requirement as it affects the site. Stafford County's requirement for that, if I may speak to that tonight, is grossly higher than any of the other surrounding locations, and that's well demonstrated in this information here. So I'll be certainly prepared to take that up when that part comes up, but I would encourage that, that is the critical element to the success of their plans. And I'll leave this with you all. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, are we in a public hearing, or are we just, okay?
In the past, we invited people to come up that were...
No, I mean, I'd like to ask questions, so...
Yeah, you stand, yeah, go right ahead.
So again, do you have a recommendation, you have something in front of you to deal with the, I guess what you're trying to say is warehousing is different than manufacturing, and that you might want to consider a proposal that kind of melds the two potentially?
That would also, that would also be certainly suitable. You have this indoor storage requirement with a huge parking requirement, and there's really nobody associated with it, which drives, that's why they're, they've got so many parking spaces that are unused, because they've got bags of material and not employees. And so, and that's kind of the way the other localities have, have looked at this. All of the other jurisdictions use the one per thousand gross floor area for the industrial use, your two and a half. So I believe the proposal was to make that reduction to one, and I would suggest that is a good, good plan. We offered, as a suggestion, the employee-based count because it was more conservative than the surrounding localities, and we thought it would be perhaps acceptable. But, you know, the remarks you made, I think, are, we are working on another economic development site that is underparked, and I'm not sure why, but, you know, they've got, it's now trying to be reused, and they're, we're evaluating that. So taking it solely on the employees, your point is well-taken, and I certainly acknowledge that.
So do you have a recommendation on the warehouse side of it?
I would say, let me just look down here and say, we have one per 5,000, one per 5,000, one per 2,500, and one that's based on employees. So, you know, certainly, I think that one per 5,000 is well reasonable. It generates parking counts, and you can see here in the comparison. And you all might decide that you want something that's a compromise. I don't think, I think 2,500 is too low for the warehouse. Personally, I think the 25, the 5,000, one per 5,000 is appropriate for storage.
And what about Mr. Rhodes' point about automated manufacturing? So you'd still have manufacturing space, but you, in his well-thought-out discussion, you might only have 10 employees for, you know, I'm just throwing something out, 50,000 square feet. So how would, how would we deal with that kind of nuance?
In the calculations that we have for this specific site, we have an, we have a portion of the building that is devoted to manufacturing and a portion of the building that's devoted to warehouse and storage. And the calculations are blended over that. So I think if you build a facility that is partly manufacturing and partly storage, your parking calculations on the square footage should cover that.
Right, but, but Mr. Rhodes' point is a little bit different. So you've got a facility that has some employees but might be heavily automated, and it's still doing manufacturing, you know, I'm not in that business line, so I can't really provide a good example. But let's just say it's, it's probably not a good example. I'm thinking of like a UPS facility where they're, you know, they've got a lot of automated activity going on. They don't have a lot, it's not heavily employees, but the packages are moving throughout the building without employees touching it until a certain point in time. So you might have 80% of the building automated and only 20% that's got employees. I'm just trying to deal, what I'm trying to avoid is having to come back a year from now and having to do this again, if there's three different sets of circumstances. So we got manufacturing with employees, we got warehouse space, and then potentially we have manufacturing that's automated, not heavily employed square footage.
Our recommendation on the employee base was a compromise to get below, you know, it basically was going to halve the number and make a more reasonable thing. But if you go by the, when I'm suggesting for the square footage-based requirements, you're going to still have a good number, a reasonable number of parking spaces for what I would consider a typical manufacturing facility today. If it were automated, then it would get reduced, but if you use the suggested methodology, the automated place would be somewhat overparked, but it would be set for a reuse that wasn't as highly automated in the future. So you're, you're going to have the parking spaces based on that ordinance, and it would not create the situation that Mr. Rhodes suggested where you'd have a site that didn't have enough spaces.
But doesn't that equally hold true for warehousing space? Couldn't that also be turned into manufacturing at some time down the road?
I suppose that's possible, certainly. But what we see most often is you have quite a bit of area as devoted to storage in these facilities. It's just fairly typical.
All right, thank you.
I mean, like your UPS example, you know, there's a lot of room in there to store packages, so.
So I guess my question would be, if, if you're all right with the, us going to one per 1,000, and then at some other point, we have to look at the warehouse element? Are you all right with that we vote for, go forward with the one per 1,000 tonight, and then we don't have to have another public hearing for the shift for industrial, because no longer are we dealing with industrial, we're dealing with warehouse?
Let me make sure I'm understanding the timeline we've talked about here. Tonight, we're going to act on the industrial use and the count for that, and then at the next meeting, you would, for the next meeting, you would advertise a public hearing to discuss the reductions for the warehouse indoor storage component?
Mr. Harvey, I don't think the answer is yes. So the item for December would still be for industrial, it would not be for manufacturing, correct?
For warehouse.
Mr. Chairman, the, so far, the draft amendment is for manufacturing. The question may be, can the commission authorize a hearing to also amend the warehousing component? And I was speaking with counsel, and we think that is a possibility, if the commission wants to do that.
All right, so that's why I was trying to save you from, if we can't do warehouse, then I didn't want to have you come back again for something that isn't possible. So, Mr. Harvey and Ms. McLendon, if I understand correctly, we could, this evening, if it's the will of the commission, after we have the formal public hearing, go forward with the proposal before us, which is based on square footage for industrial, and then we authorize for a public hearing on the warehouse in December?
Mr. Chairman, I believe you'd probably need to include that all in the same amendment, rather than have two separate amendments.
So defer tonight, and then do both of them?
Mr. Chairman, I believe it'd be a need to re-advertise for a new amendment, that would have both components in it.
Okay, all right. Everybody sort of understand where we are now?
We're broadening the scope.
Okay, terrific. I just, again, I didn't want you to have to come out twice, when we were actually thinking you wouldn't have to speak today at all. All right, so any other questions for Mr. Furnival? Did I say that right? Okay. All right, thank you. So now, we will open it up to the public for the public hearing section. If you'd like to come up and speak only on this topic of where industrial parking spaces going down from 2.5 to 1, come on down to the microphone. Okay, and it's just on the parking thing? Okay, thank you.
Yes, my name is David Silver. I reside at Two Skywood Court, Stafford, Rock Hill District. According to the paperwork on it, it says that the City of Frederick requires one parking spot, space per 1,000 feet, and Prince William County, the same, and Spotsylvania County, the same. So it looks like it works for them, and they have a lot more businesses there.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. Much appreciated. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will formally close the public hearing section of this evening. Do we have a motion along the lines of that we re-advertise for, I just want to make sure, Mr. Harvey, that I get this correct. We re-ad, I know, that we direct staff to re-advertise a public hearing for the industrial and the warehouse component?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the next question I'll have is, what specific standard is the commission considering for the advertisement?
Okay, so I would, Mr. Vanuch, if you want to?
Can I ask again another procedural question?
Yes, sir.
So if we make it, let's hypothetically say 5,000, and we want to change it to 2,500, is that permissible under the advertisement, or does it make, give us more flexibility if we advertise it at 2,500 and ramp it back up to 5,000? Which, can we do without having to go back and do another re-advertising?
Wait, I never get this right, so I want to make the guess. I think it's if you advertise it at a lower number and subsequently decide to make it higher, that's less impactful on the public, and therefore, that's what would be permissible.
Right, but you'd need more spaces, you'd need more spaces for 2,500 than you would for 5,000.
We're making Ms. McLendon work for her tootsie rolls today.
This is higher math, so it might take a while.
For all the people who are new, there's certain times, we can go, we have to set at a certain level, and we can't change it a certain, one way or the other. Some we can, and we don't want to do it wrong.
And we can never remember.
Pass those down to her, she's deserved them. Yes, it's for energy, for everything she's had to do.
So my question goes back to flexibility. What, which standard would allow us to make a change without having to re-advertise? Is it the one parking space per 2,500 square footage of warehouse, or 5,000 square foot of warehouse space?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, Mr. Harvey, in the current standard is one per 1,000?
Yes, for warehouse space.
Okay. I would advise the commission to advertise at the highest, so one per 5,000, and then you could always go in between one per 5,000 to, all the way down to one per 1,000. Anywhere in that middle range, I think it'd be okay.
Now, let me just, not that I want to defend that I'm wrong again, but let me just make sure I understand this, because if we advertise at 1 to 5,000, they have 100,000-square-foot facility, that requires them to have 20 parking places. But then if we change it to 1 to 1,000, they now would have to have 100 parking places. Isn't that more impactful on them changing it that way than what we advertised?
Well, the current standard is a little bit different. If we were imposing a standard, I would agree with you, but because you're talking about the current standard, the commission has the ability to go between what's...
Because it's already 1 to 1?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll have, make sure Mr. Harvey articulates this the way he wants to. The feeling of the commission is to go 1 to 1,000, the existing language that's in our packet tonight, for industrial. And then we want to go...
Manufacturing.
And for manufacturing. And then for warehouses, the motion will be one for 5,000? Correct, Mr. Harvey?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so everybody understand, it's 1 to 1,000, the same as what we have in the 1 to 5,000 for warehouse, and that would be advertised for our December 13th meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's Ms. Vanuch's motion, and Mr. Appicella has seconded. Anything, Ms. Vanuch?
No, I don't think we need to talk about this anymore.
Okay, Mr. Appicella?
I think we need dead silence for another five minutes.
All right, any other comments? All right, so please cast your votes. And it passes unanimously. So we will see the gentleman back here in...
So this is tabling the current item that was for public hearing because we're going to re-advertise in the new form?
Yes, sir. Right. Okay, thank you very much. So now, we go back to item number one, which, again, we apologize because we thought there really would be no discussion on item number two. That's why we moved it. So I apologize for that. So now, Mr. Harvey, public hearing number one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please recognize Mr. Fiorello for the presentation.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Joseph Fiorello with Stafford County Planning and Zoning, here to present the request for departure for Southern Classics. I'll start by reading the request itself. A request for departure from design and construction standards for landscaping, screening, and buffering, also known as the DCSL manual, to alleviate the applicant from meeting certain buffer requirements on tax parcel numbers 44-69C and 44-69E, zoned M1 light industrial. Relief has been requested from the DCSL Section 110.3, transition buffers to allow the applicant to meet the requirement, I'm sorry, I misread, to allow the applicant not to meet the requirements of the transition buffer type C, which is a 50-foot buffer, along both side and rear property lines, and DCSL Section 120.4 landscaping street trees, to allow the applicant not to meet the requirements for a street tree buffer along the front yard and Fleet Road. The property consists of 2.33 acres, located on the north side of Fleet Road, approximately 670 feet west of Stafford Lakes Parkway, within the Hartwood election district. I'd like to start with the first slide here. Let me get, again, departure from transition buffers and street trees. The agent for the applicant is Mr. Stephen Ball with WW Webb and Associates, and the applicant is Mr. Olive Herrick of Southern Classics. The site is suburban on the comprehensive plan, and the site does meet the goals and requirements of the comprehensive plan. Again, the whole area is suburban. The zoning, the site there shown in blue in the center is zoned M1. It's surrounded by A1 and R1. Current conditions, to the southeast, we can see that we've got a residential use there, a property that is adequately wooded through most of the property. That's adjacent property to the southeast. And you can see the front yard there, that it's mostly been paved. There's little room due to line-of-sight requirements for any vegetation along the street there. And also, I think the transition buffers, I have another slide, will eventually, this one here, which roughly shows there in yellow, the highlighted areas where the transition buffers are not able to be met. The reason being is the... The reason being is the proximity to, of the buildings to the property lines there along the northern boundary with the adjacent residential property. Now, that residential property to the north happens to be owned by the same owner of this project site. Let me step back a minute. The proposed building would go in the southeastern quadrant of the parcel, if you will, and with the location of the building there, that leaves little options for a transition buffer along that southeastern boundary. Here's the proposed, overall proposed plan. The building there in the center, basically, any reorientation of the building does not allow for the ingress and egress and turnaround, or turning radius of vehicles that would be serviced there. So, with the building located there in that area, the transition buffer along that property is not able to be met. And again, the street trees as well. Based on the site configuration and proposed development plan, staff does not have recommendations to accommodate the required landscape transition buffers or street trees at this time. The use and proposed expansion meets the intent of the comprehensive plan, as mentioned And that concludes-
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello.
My presentation.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for? Seeing none, we thank you. The applicant gets a chance to speak at this time? It's either Mr. Ball or Mr. Herrick?
Actually, I'm David Richardson, not Steve Ball, with WW Web and Associates, Mr. Chairman and members. Just want to thank staff for working with us on this. We were presented this puzzle, and it is a puzzle, for sure. Mr. Herrick bought the property. He has done significant upgrades to it, if any of you have been by there. So, he is bringing this property to a good, good value and a much better vista from the road. We do have a lot of difficulties. The reason for the spacing between the building and the property line is he's currently working with the county school buses and fire engines, so that is the turning radiuses that we're dealing with. So, that's basically the reason. The upfront, the existing fence that's up there now, we are pushing that back for more line of sight, for safety on the in and out of the project. So, it is moving back, but unfortunately, we just don't have the space for the landscaping. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Any questions for him? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I will now open up the public hearing. Again, if you'd like to speak on just this topic alone, you're welcome to come down to the microphone. You have three minutes. State your name and address. Give your opinions. When you see the yellow light, you have one minute left. At the red light, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Anyone wishing to speak about the departure from design standards? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Mr. English, this is in your district, I believe?
Yes, sir. And I'm familiar with where he's talking about, and it is a little tight road, and I understand the situation they're in. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve WAI 17152056.
Second.
All right, we had Mr. English, and then a tie with Ms. Vanuch and Mr. Rhodes. Mr. English, anything that was to say?
No, I'm just, I'm glad to hear they're moving that fence back, because like I said, I know that road, and it is tight and it is small, so I appreciate that.
Okay. Ms. Vanuch?
No further comment.
Mr. Rhodes?
No further comment.
Okay. And be equal, right? Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I want to thank the applicant and the staff for doing what I think is a really good job of presenting a case. I think this is a good example of when a departure is actually warranted, and the circumstances that would basically preclude any other options from occurring, and again, why a departure is warranted in this circumstance. So, thanks for helping us make a good decision here.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, if you'll take a moment to vote. And it passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Herrick. And so, that ends our public hearing section of the evening. And so, now we move on to new business, of which we have none, so now we have Planning Director's Report. Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, we do have item number three, unfinished business. The Plan Commission needs to consider authorizing a public hearing for definition of e-commerce.
You know how much I like that e-commerce. All right. Anything to report on e-commerce, sir? I know we have to authorize a public hearing this evening.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Based on the comments at the last Plan Commission meeting, the commission had suggested that the Board of Supervisors grant the commission additional time to study this issue, specifically in relation to home-based businesses. Staff has prepared a report for next Tuesday's Board of Supervisors meeting to authorize that additional time for review. However, due to time and constraints for required action on this amendment, the commission technically has to authorize the public hearing tonight for your December meeting. Overstaffed note, if the commission so desires, we can have the ad removed if the Board grants the extension.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Harvey? All right. So, if I understand correctly, we could have a motion to authorize a public hearing, as well as to authorize staff to pull the public hearing if the Board of Supervisors so desires at their meeting next week? Is that adequate, Mr. Harvey and Ms. McLendon?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Rhodes, seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Vanuch. Mr. Rhodes, any comment?
No, sir.
And Ms. Vanuch?
No further comment.
All right, any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, I really hope the Board of Supervisors gives us more time, because if this is the form that comes back to us, I won't be able to support it, so.
Right. I think that's, you know, the strong feeling on that report. And I'm sure Mr. Harvey will reflect that to him. All right. If we'll take a moment to vote, to go to a public hearing and/or pull it should the Board decide to. And that passes unanimously. All right, now we will move to the Planning Director's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Zaraf is going to give an update to the Plan Commission on items four, five, and six. Item four is discussing a work plan for a potential update to our bicycle and pedestrian facilities element of the comprehensive plan. Item five is potential new element of the, excuse me, an update to our neighborhood design standards of the comprehensive plan, specifically to address standards for senior apartments, and also a status update on the joint public hearing that the commission will be holding December 19th with the Board of Supervisors regarding a proffer amendment and conditional use permit amendment regarding the hospital property.
Okay, thank you. Welcome back, Mr.-
Thank you. Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Mike Zaraf, the Planning and Zoning Department. So, you received in your package a memo that I want to go just quickly review. It's our proposed work plan for amendments to the bicycle and pedestrian facilities plan element of the comprehensive plan. The resolution from the Board requested the Planning Commission prepare amendments to the plan, addressing bicycle and pedestrian facilities, hold a public hearing, and provide its recommendation, recommendation to the Board by June 30th of next year. The plan update will be prepared primarily by Planning and Zoning staff, with assistance from several other staff in the county government. And we're going to reach out to certain stakeholders, which may include running, local running, cycling, and other recreational groups, regional trailer organizations as well, George Washington Regional Commission, and VDOT schools and other locality information, which will all help in this effort. So, just kind of quickly going through the work plan. So, ongoing efforts, we plan on providing the commission monthly technical memorandums that will just provide a quick plan status update, so you can see how things are going along. And ongoing, internally, we're conducting bi-weekly staff meetings, working group meetings to develop elements of the plan. That's been ongoing for the last few months, because we're anticipating this moving forward. At this point, we are going to work towards identifying all the more detailed and specific stakeholders that will help in the effort. This evening, Brian Gooch, who is, he's down at GWRC, at their technical committee that they're conducting, to present them with what we're working on and our process. This GWRC committee is currently working on updating the 2013 regional bicycle and pedestrian facilities plan. So, this is an opportunity for us to go down and, and connect with some of the groups that may help us in our efforts. So, that's all happening tonight. Next month, we will continue working on developing specific facility recommendations. And then as we get into January and February, we'll, we'll finish up our initial kind of suggestions and, and work with the stakeholder group to conduct some formal meetings and work through maybe some email and website sharing to, so people can kind of see where this is all heading. And we envision that as we get into March, to plan at this point to do public meetings, to present some of the recommendations and solicit input. In the past, we have, for these public types of public input meetings, we've conducted two public input meetings, one in the northern part of the county and one in the southern part of the county. So, you know, as I finished, like to get your input on that, if you feel that that would be appropriate in this case as well. As we get into April, then, we would work to try to complete a draft plan that would address comments received by, by the community, and present that draft plan to the commission. And then we, at this point, if we can get into May, that hopefully, the Planning Commission at that point will be able to initiate a public hearing and hold a public hearing at their, your first meeting in June. And that would all allow this effort to complete by the second June meeting, if everything goes as we plan here tonight. So, any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Zaraf? Just a couple of questions, if I could. I had sent Mr. Harvey a name of somebody who was interested, and I'm sure the answer is yes, but he sent that name over to you?
Yeah, we received that, and we will reach out to them.
Cool, thank you. And then, in theory, does this timeline correspond to what the supervisors were sort of envisioning when they sent this to us?
Yes, yeah, this was, this all fits within the timeline that they've established. And so, we, you know, as we go forward, if we discover that there's some, some major issues that, that may require some modification, then I think we can address it at that point.
Excellent. All right, any other feedback or input? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Zaraf, for that one. Now, we move to the next one.
All right. The next one is another work plan. This is for the amendments to the Neighborhood Development Standards Plan element of the comp plan. This is for addressing senior apartments. The resolution from the Board on this item requests the Planning Commission report recommendations to the Board in advance of conducting any public hearings. There was no specific deadline established in the resolution. So, just kind of providing, you know, in this case, again, plan update will be prepared primarily by Planning and Zoning staff. We will gather input from other, other county staff, and, and also look at other senior housing apartment facilities and managers, and then just other information that we can glean from, from conditions out in the field. Looking through the work plan, providing a quick summary, some of the ongoing efforts. Again, we will provide a regular monthly technical memorandum with the status updates. As we move forward, this month and into December, it's going to basically be data collection period for us, where we'll meet with appropriate county staff from different departments. We talk to developers, senior apartment operators, and special, any special interest groups we might be able to identify, research some standards in senior apartment products in other jurisdictions, maybe conduct some site visits, or get field observations, do some internet research as well. And we, I pointed out some of the issues that we will look at in considering this modification and amendment. Safety considerations, including fire sprinklers, material considerations, you know, dealing with steel construction versus wood framing, ingress and egress, building entrances and parking, crime prevention, dealing with lighting and landscaping, and in other factors such as community amenities. So, after the data collection period, getting into the middle of December and into January, we'll work to formulate some draft design standards and to incorporate into the, into the NDS plan in January or February, present these, these recommendations to the commission for review, and hopefully, by March, the commission would be able to send forward its recommendations onto the Board for their review. And at that point, the Board would, would go through their process to consider those recommendations and send it back to the commission for a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Zaraf. Item six.
Okay, item six, the Stafford Hospital East Campus. We do have PowerPoint for this. This, this case involves two applications, zoning reclassification, it's more specifically proffer amendment, and a conditional use permit. These requests would permit CR associates, or CRA, to construct and operate an outpatient family health center for military personnel and their families on land that's known as the East Campus of the Stafford Hospital complex. As you know, joint public hearing with the Board has been scheduled for the Board's December 19th meeting. So, kind of before you tonight, just to kind of give you a heads-up and advance information on the, on the application, and also collect any information or comments you might have that we can forward on to the applicant. We will be advertising for a public hearing, basically, at the end of the month, so we can, we can definitely forward on any comments to the applicant, and they can consider those modifications before we get to the advertising period. So, reviewing the location, this, this application, it covers both the West and East Campus of, of the overall Stafford Hospital complex. The West Campus is the area where the hospital currently exists, generally in this area. And then the East Campus is the remainder of the property for orientation. Jefferson Davis Highway is in this location. This is Hospital Center Boulevard and Courthouse Road. The total area covers 65 acres, and this, this image shows the existing conditions on the property. You can see the hospital and all the surrounding parking and travelways on the West Campus, on the East Campus. We do actually have in place a street, a, a public street, a street that would be dedicated to the, to the public as a public street. It's known as George Washington Avenue. It hasn't been dedicated yet, or accepted yet by, by VDOT. And then also, you can see several parking bays. The actual buildings have just, have not been built there yet. This is the current general development plan on the property that was approved back in the approximately 2006 to 2008 timeframe. Focusing on the East Campus, you can see that the general development plan identified that same public street, and with a connection through to, to the county, to county property in this location. And then it had several individual buildings- And then it had several individual buildings located on the site surrounded by parking. Under the new proposed general development plan, which would be required to be amended, this facility is proposed to have one large facility under one roof. It would generally utilize the same access point that's where George Washington Avenue was oriented, but it would not be a public street. It would not connect through to the county property that, under this proposal, would be amended and modified generally in this location off of Care Lane. The proffers do allow for some adjustment to the ultimate location of where that connection is due to environmental considerations and what happens on the other adjacent properties. The facility itself, on the east campus, one of the requirements is that it be a secure facility. That's the reason why that street would not be connected through in that location, and the facility would be surrounded by security fencing. So, this is just zooming in on that same area. And just, I was going to go through and summarize the main points of the proffer amendment and conditional use permit. The proffer amendment would allow the site to be developed with any hospital or medical related uses. Conformance with the GDP would not be required, apart from specific elements that are listed. Access to the east campus would be limited to a single entrance, as shown in this one There's modifications to the terms and contribution amounts for potential signalization at Courthouse Road and Hospital Center Boulevard. There's potential to, for an increased contribution for traffic signal up from the current amount of 160,000 up to 300,000, which is more in line with the going rate for traffic signals of this, in this type of situation. Also, drive-through facility would be allowed on the CRA facility site. The drive-through facility would be allowed, would be for the purpose of people picking up medication subscriptions, prescriptions. Also, relocation of the interparcial access, as I mentioned, off of Care Lane. There would be overall square footage limits for medical clinic uses on the property, with additional square footage limits specific to the east campus, in line with the specific proposal. A Fred bus stop on the east campus would be provided if the CRA facility contract is not awarded, and a use may be more concurrent with what was previously proposed would occur on the property.
Would they not see any benefit to potentially having Fred bus access for some of their patrons?
We discussed that, and I guess the issue is how to get a stop here, I guess typically would be...
Right off Hospital Center Boulevard, just a cutout. In that way, because there will be some of their patrons that that might be beneficial to, that might be a suggestion to them, while not on site inside the perimeter, but on to the main road.
We'll mention that to them.
Thank you.
Also, the several medical clinic conditions that were part of the original condition use permit would be moved to the proffer amendment. This is because the medical clinic use is now a byright use in the B2 zoning district, and no longer applies to the conditional use permit. And several other original proffers that have been satisfied would be removed from the revised proffer statement. Quickly going through the conditional use permit, we would, again, remove the medical dental clinic part of the conditional use permit, as it's now permitted by right. And again, those conditions get transferred over to the proffer, to the proffers. It would add an exception to the height requirements for a fence as part of the use permit. As I mentioned, there'd be a security fence around the entire perimeter of the site, and that fencing does have height limitations, and they wish to exceed that. Currently, the B2, in the B2 zoning district, the maximum height requirement is, height limit is eight feet, and they wish to provide a 10-foot tall fence on the site. Also, this would update tax map parcel numbers, identifying which are part of the east campus and west campus. Several of the conditions would clarify what applies to the east campus and west campus areas. This would divide conditions into the specific sections, which would include general conditions, maximum building height conditions, hospital use conditions, and fence height conditions. We'd remove also several conditions that have already been satisfied as part of the original development, remove several conditions that apply to medical dental clinics, or that no longer require a use permit, and also add several new conditions for the proposed security fencing, which limits the ultimate height, restricts the location to the east campus complex, and establishes fence material and design standards, and prohibits features such as razor wire or barbed wire type of materials. Here's this illustration that they included. You can see the, in the foreground, the fencing that would be located around the complex, and the general design of the building. It does attempt to mimic some of the design features of the hospital, but this is proposed as a one-story complex, so you're not going to have the same exact look as the hospital itself. And it's a quick summary, and again, here's another, one more image that does show the drive-through in relation to the main building.
This is probably going to be a question. Are they going to make this building, or do you know? If it goes to the traffic that they're expecting, is it going to be able to, is this building going to be designed that they could go up a floor, like the hospital's doing? Or is it not going to be built like that? It's just going to be strictly for one level, and not a basement in it, or anything like that?
Yeah, it's one level, and the, I believe the conditions itself would limit it to one level. And we've been worked through the conditions with the applicant, and they're okay with the conditions.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking, if it's going to generate the traffic, is, long-term, it might be feasible to go up another, be able to go up another story if need be.
Yeah, at that point, then, they would likely have to come in for a use permit amendment if things move forward as being, as are being recommended. Also, the parking is going to increase, and they're likely going to then, probably the only way to do it might be with parking, a parking structure.
Understood.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Rappuccello?
So, what is the height of the current west campus?
That is 90 feet.
Which is how many stories?
That they, well, they have, I believe, four stories, if I'm, I think it's four stories, but then extra, you know, kind of features that raise the ultimate height of the building.
So, this new proffer that this building's located on the east campus will not exceed four stories? That would, they could make the size equivalent, or are there any standards that have changed that would make it smaller than the west campus? I'm just trying to make sure they're not precluding themselves from potentially building the same style and size building that they have currently in place.
That four-story height would, is being recommended because, yeah, it would, it would kind of allow for them to provide some sort of modification, and have, build on a smaller footprint and build up. And the four-story recommendation is kind of consistent with some of the comp plan recommendations in this area of the courthouse targeted growth area.
And do you think the reason they don't want to proffer the GDP, because there's no guarantee the CRA facility will go under contract? It won't necessarily get approved by the family?
That is a part of the concern, yes.
So, if I were to, and the side-by-side, awesome, very helpful. And if I could, in my own mind, summarize what the changes are. There aren't a lot of changes. Either the proffer's been satisfied, there are no changes, there are some minor tweaks, and then there's a few additions. Does that kind of summarize?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a lot of cleanup. It is, they are minimal. I mean, it's generally because you have a different layout than what was originally approved, and so, some adjustments to, that will require. The biggest thing maybe is the access road that shifts the location and the overall, you know, layout of the development.
Just one last question. Do you see any risks or concerns if it doesn't become what is currently envisioned for the site, and it becomes potentially something else?
No, I think they, you know, they very well could just fall back to what it was before, because the infrastructure's already in place. And if there was a desire for it to be anything different, or in excess of the square footage caps, then they're going to have to come back in for another change.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rappuccello, just for information purposes, the property on the east campus currently has site plan approval for up to 117,000 square feet of medical clinic space, medical office space. This proposal's for 110,000. It's in one building versus 10, so it's very similar as far as impact.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey, thank you, Mr. Zarev. Any other questions? First, thank you for the chart. It's excellent, it was very concise, and was very easy to read. I encourage any members to send any questions or feedback to staff as soon as possible. I believe, Mr. Harvey, you said that any changes, alterations have to be ready for a public, for the advertisement of the public hearing rather soon, so that, please do so in a timely fashion. Thank you. Mr. Raff?
Mr. Chairman, I have two more items on my report, if you can bear with me for a minute.
Certainly, sir.
You'd asked for some information on residential projects that have been approved this year, that bypassed the preliminary plan process. There are six projects that have been approved so far this year that have done so. I've highlighted them in the chart that was distributed. Staff will provide more detail for the end-of-year roll-up in the January annual report. Also, want to let the commission know that the Public Works Director, Mr. Chris Rapp, has left service with the county, and I'll be coordinating with the interim Public Works Director, Keith Dayton, on future dates for presentations on transportation-related matters.
Thank you. Okay, all right, Ms. Plinman.
I have no report at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we go to committee reports. Sign ordinance committee, anything?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. And basically, that has gone up to the supervisor, so it's just waiting to see whatever they do.
No, we're still working on it.
Oh, okay.
We'll finish their work, and we'll schedule an OAB coming September.
All right, thank you, sir. Landscaping, standards subcommittee?
I want to refer to Ms. Horning. She's got some information for us.
Good evening, Ms. Horning.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The landscape ordinance committee had concluded their meetings last month, and, excuse me, as a result, staff had taken the updated Design Construction Standards Manual and forwarded on to the development community and engineers. And so far, I have received just one comment for some clarification of language. But staff is also currently working on some of the schedules that are at the back of the manual, so that they are in line with the text that had been amended throughout the document. So, when I sent out the emails, I asked for information based on the text, and gave them a copy of the definitions, and let them know that this is in draft form, that staff is working on that, and it will be forwarded to the committee at a future date when the committee, commission can select a public hearing date. So, in December, hopefully, I will have a more definitive update of a number of engineers and developers who have commented on the manual, to see if there's anything that stands out, other than maybe clarifying language.
Okay, and I believe, Mr. English and I also asked that individuals who had expressed an interest on this topic, either at our meetings or other meetings, or who attended our subcommittee meetings, also be reached out to, so that we can get their input as well, since they had already expressed an interest in it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. All right, parking and drive aisle.
All right, so, the parking and drive aisle subcommittee has not had any additional meetings since the last publicly advertised meeting on October 10th at 3:30. So, we don't really have a major update. We are currently in the process of gathering external stakeholder input, and that deadline is December 1st. And at that time, we'll be prepared to provide the commission with an overview of the proposed changes that we would think are appropriate for the parking and drive aisle ordinance changes.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you. All right, we move to the A1 uses. We need to establish a subcommittee. This was given to us, I believe, in October. We sort of decided to wait on this until some of the subcommittees had wrapped up, since many of them have basically wrapped up, except for waiting for some input. I would like to ask if Mr. Rappuccello, Mr. English would join me in serving on the A1 subcommittee. Okay. And if, Mr. Harvey, if you could just sort of communicate with the three of us as to what information and staffing, and where staff has moved on this, because I think at our last meeting, we sort of hinted that staff could start working on it while we were waiting. And then we could pick a date for a meeting, hopefully in December, so that we can move on this, rather than waiting too much longer, so the board knows.
Yes, sir, we'll consult with the now-formed committee and establish a meeting date and agenda.
This is the year of the subcommittee.
It is, and just for clarification, the reason why I selected or requested Mr. English to join me is, we both have a lot of A1 property in our districts. And Mr. Rappuccello, having served on this body a long time, and not having joined our many subcommittees lately, I felt that...
Are you saying it's my turn?
Yes, that's exactly what I was saying. All right.
I'm not saying that Ms. Vanoush and I are dragging out our subcommittee, just to get them all selected.
Yes.
We could have been done months ago.
The cemetery ordinance committee, likewise, we postponed establishing it to wrap up some committee meetings. So, but again, we don't, since the board gave this to us in October, we'd like to get moving on this. So, if the existing members are willing to serve, again, since they're the ones that dug into this in the first place, no pun intended, then, and they've sort of the ones that sat through all the staff reports on this, I would ask them if they would serve again. No, noes. And then, we have tentatively, I've talked to staff about the...
Is there any timeline on that?
No, I don't think there was a specific timeframe.
I didn't think so, just wanted to make sure.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, there's no deadline for action.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, but I don't want to defer it any longer than really appropriate. So, I've tentatively asked staff to look at a date of December 6th, which is a Wednesday in the evening at 6:30, likely to be in the ABC room, so that, that lets you know, tentatively, that's where we're looking at a date. If anything's different, I'm sure Mr. Harvey will let us know and let the public know. But there are no other board meetings at night, and we thought 6:30 was a good time, because that's when we normally meet, so that was, that would be a good particular time. So, that lets everyone know. The who's and the whens of that, again, when we initiated this subcommittee way back, way back, it also was sort of, Mr. English and myself have a lot of land outside the urban service area, so we have a lot of wells in our communities, and that's why we sort of came up on that, as well as Rock Hill has wells, and other people who are already on wonderful subcommittees. So, that's how we got into this in the first place. All right, anything else on that for committee reports? I think that wraps up all our subcommittees. Chairman's report, I have asked staff to look at the 2018 calendar already, so that in December, we can look at it. And in particular, I asked the staff to examine that we don't do what we started to do this year, which we did actually fix, which was having meetings where the board of supervisors met on Tuesday, and we were meeting on the Wednesday, so that, that would be taken into account, so staff is not coming two nights a week in a row. And then I just remind everybody that the, Ms. Mallow will be sending out those wonderful financial forms that we are required by the state to turn in, just that... financial forms that we are required by the state to turn in, just so you have that on your radar screen. Other business, we have our TRC, November 22nd has been canceled, so we have one December 13th. And I believe that everybody's been informed of that, Garrisonville, Griffiths, Widewater, and Hartwood. And now we have the Mike Rhodes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion and recommend approval October 25th minutes.
Okay, we have the Mike Rhodes minutes.
No further comment.
All right, Ms. Vanoush?
No further comment.
All right, any comments? And so we vote on approval of the minutes for those who, he spoke so quickly.
October 25th.
Yes, for October 25th, and it passes unanimously. I wish everyone a joyous Thanksgiving as we head into the holiday season, and the meeting is adjourned.
Eight o'clock on the dot.